You know, I was thinking, is there a nuclear violation in any state or federal? It looks, on the surface, as something bad.
At this time, we entertain a motion to return to open session.
Take it.
Motion's been made by Teal, properly seconded by Deuce. Any discussion? All in favor of said motion, let the normal say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. And it is unanimous. All right, let's stand for a moment of silence, then we'll say our pledge of allegiance. Okay, we'll say our pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all. All right, we changed things up just a little bit on the agenda, so we'll go straight to the superintendent's report for Dr. Goodwin.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, every five years, we have to submit a district strategic renewal plan. Part of that brings up the fact that we do have a school that is a middle-high school combination, which is actually a little bit of a variance from the typical regulation 43-205, which says you have a separate principal for middle school, separate principal for high school. You may recall that we brought this to you five years ago, because we bring it every five years, and we're bringing it back to you as part of that process now. And we would ask for your approval of the request for waiver of regulation 43-205.
Okay, so we'll need a motion for the request for the waiver.
So move.
Take.
Deuce has made the motion, Teal's properly seconded. Any discussion? All in favor of said motion, let the normal say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. And it's unanimous. All right, at this time, we'll call on our assistant superintendent, Dr. Anderson, for our personnel report.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, at this time, I'd like to recommend that following exhibits be approved, exhibits A through F.
So move.
Take.
Motion made by Deuce, properly seconded by Teal. Any discussion? All in favor of said motion, let the normal say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. And it is unanimous. All right, for our take five this evening.
It's five.
Five.
We invite the chief financial officer.
That's five.
All three, at least fifteen.
Hands on.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Dr. Goodwin, good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I typically like for this work session to be able to bring you some preliminary figures, some numbers that the budget may look like when we get to the May 1st reading. However, the simple of it is, we do not have projections through the Senate finance version of the budget at this time. So when we talked to you last time, it gave you some information, that was based on what the House figures had been released to us. So this evening, what I want to do is give you a preview and an overview of what the differences are between the budget versions as they stand right now, give you a few things to anticipate, and be happy to answer any questions that you have. I'll allow Dr. Goodwin to speak about a couple of concerns he may have going forward as well. So we'll jump right in and go through a few items this evening. Again, the driving force, we will look at all components of the district as we review the budget and start putting that together. So timeline and general information. So full Senate is debating the budget this week. I'll let you know that if you want to tune in to the Senate budget debate, I'll let you know to keep in mind that they tackle things as they come through, and you never know when they're going to come through. So if you want to hear things about the budget, you're going to have to tune in and stay tuned in pretty frequently, or else you may miss a component of that. So once the Senate finishes their debate of the budget, it goes back to the House to get either a confirmation or a no. And at that point, it goes to conference committee, where they are then looking for a compromise and a final version of the budget to go to the governor's office. We're not sure how long or how short of a period of time it may take this week. As you know, everything has happened in pretty quick fashion up to this point, so we're not quite sure exactly how this is going to play out. Just an update on contracts. Contracts are out, but those are not final until May 10th, and that is a state-established date. So at this time, we're not sure of what any savings estimates for staffing may be. Here's the reason, again, we do not have preliminary figures, is because things changed quite drastically from the House to the Senate finance version. South Carolina Department of Education has not had the opportunity to provide revenue projections for us. So again, we want to do high-level overview, give you some information about what's changing and where we're headed. So what are a few of the challenges we're dealing with, key challenges? Well, funding reform. Quite simply, this is something that was attempted years ago, and here we are, three, four years later, and some of those same components are now sticking. And we are seeing those come to fruition in the budget. So reform overall, unfortunately, it seems to be that we're having to tackle a lot of it at one time as opposed to small pieces. So we're trying to combat that and get it broken up as much as we can so that we can deal with these as we go. Substantial mandated teacher salary increases to include a step that will also be mandated in the budget. And just a reminder that the state does not provide financial support for any of those categories or classifications that are outside of proviso 1.3. And as a reminder also, the step is not funded once again in any of these budget versions. Pretty typical that we deal with that year to year. You may recall that the 1% employer retirement increase was frozen during the pandemic year. So that 1% increase now goes through 2024. So we've got a couple of years to endure that as opposed to just one through '23. Teacher shortage impact, no need to comment further. We know what's happening statewide and nationwide. What is disappointing is when we look at the budget as it's been, as it is being presented, the goal you may hear time and time again is that the attempt is to create more equity across the state and among districts. But the fact of the matter is that this methodology, this approach, we fear will actually create wider gaps among school districts with regard to salary schedules, because you're going to have the story of the haves and have-nots. Districts who can afford to pay above the state minimum salary schedule by quite a bit use this as a recruitment and a retention tool, whereas other districts will not have that ability. I think we've mentioned this before, but just to keep it in front of you, that we are looking at a substantial employer health insurance increase. We're not going to get into that numbers-wise, but we do hope that funding sources outside of the K-12 budget being addressed by legislators will provide some support for that increase. So let's look at some comparisons between the House version, that has been out for a couple of weeks, and the recently passed Senate finance version that now sits on the desk of the full Senate for debate. So as you may recall, the House reformed all funding. That's old funding that we're currently getting and new funding for the '22-'23 year. The formula changed, the method in which they would deliver the money changed, where you have these pots that are consolidated and rolled up, and you just have one big general fund pot and one small EIA pot. And we were told that we have to meet certain local criteria for that EIA portion. The Senate finance version does reform, however, it does say that we will keep the funding that we currently get under the same methodology, so the reform would only apply to the new '22-'23 funding. Both versions add $227 million in new funding to '22-'23. $123 million of that, excuse me, general fund, $103 billion of EIA. So no real change there. The House version, because it reformed both old and new funding pots, required the statewide average of a 25% local match on EIA in both old funding and new funding. Created a real problem, because that took money out of the district's pocket with the stroke of a pen, if you will. The Senate finance version does give us a little bit of relief on that, where the local match would only be required on the new funding for the '22-'23 year. So we would retain 100% of the EIA funding we have now, but the new pot would be subject to local match. And I've given you the five line items that the proposal on the House side rolls up into the new funding model. I have underlined the ones that apply to Chesapeake County School District, aid to districts at risk, teacher supply supplement, and the supplement fringe portion. The Senate version does the same, but again, it only applies to the new funding. We get to keep the old portions as they are. Okay, this is the biggest change of any as we look at the proposals. The House was moving the starting teacher pay to $40,000. The Senate proposes to move that to $38,000. And those are changes to the state minimum salary schedule. It has nothing to do with, hey, we're funding a $4,000 raise or a $2,000 raise. It's just a move on the teacher salary schedule for minimum starting pay. However, and on the Senate finance version, it is a $2,000 increase to every sale on the teacher salary schedule, with $38,000 being starting pay bachelor's first-year teacher. The reason this happened is because we found out very quickly that the money that's available, the $227 million, did not afford a $4,000 increase to the minimum salary schedule. So Senate finance went back and looked at the math, and they did come to the conclusion that if we drive- that if we drop that by 2,000, it is affordable under the funding plan. House version does, did require that the districts would maintain the local supplement. So we were coming into this year, we were at 5%. We would have had to have done the $4,000 increase to the minimum salary schedule. At the same time, we would have to maintain the local supplement. Very, very expensive. So the Senate Finance version, it's kind of counterintuitive now. They made it more affordable, but then they said, you don't have to maintain your local supplement. But if any districts can afford to do the $2,000 increase to the minimum salary schedule, then hopefully they would maintain the local supplement. And that is our plan, assuming no drastic changes.
Question. Mr. Willard?
Yes?
I'm looking at the 5% increase on the state minimum salary for bus drivers and possibly 3%. If that actually passes, we're looking at 8%, will all bus drivers get that in our district?
Well, I was getting ready to talk about that one. A bus driver increases, they are treated the same in legislation as teachers. Those are increases to the state minimum salary schedule only. It is not a straight percentage increase required to the pay. So for instance, since we are well beyond the state minimum salary schedule, we would not be required by law to give the full 8% on the dollars that are being earned. We would, however, be forced to increase the minimum salary schedule by a component, for instance, whatever the dollar change is from the minimum now to what the minimum will be, would be the dollar we would need to change our hourly rate.
Okay, so if, being that we're at the minimum now, we would be required, so in essence, they may not even get the increase based on where we're at?
Well, we feel like, just like in years past, there will be a requirement for us to increase those schedules. But the 8% is not an 8% raise on current earned salaries.
My concern is, I mean, I've been running bus driver shortages and whatever increase that comes to the bus drivers. I know we're using the language about the minimum scheduled salaries based on state, but that is a concern because sometimes when we are asked by the state to do give an increase based on where we're at, I question whether it's like, will ever get up to a salary where we are competitive with areas that surround us, because that's a concern. I really think we need to think about how we compensate our bus drivers. No more than then we look at what we call a step increase that we get behind where the state said at a minimum, where we got to bring a teacher in with zero experience and they got to support somewhere around 30 plus. I mean, we got to really think about how we're treating our bus drivers, salary-wise.
Okay, thank you. Senate Finance version is the same, no changes there. Both versions does increase, do increase the teacher salaries, teacher supply reimbursements from $275 to $300. That should be funded by the state, always has been. Few other things. And these are, these are things I wanted you to be aware of, really have nothing to do with numbers. Both versions will mandate publication through what is referred to now as a dashboard for both revenues and expenditure, or budgets and expenditures. We do that already. It's just going to be mandated through a format dictated by the state that those are disclosed. This one is an interesting one. Districts will be required to engage with an auditor that's on the state-approved list. We're not sure what that means just yet. We're not sure what that means for vetting and RFPs and procurement procedures districts already use to acquire audit firms, but just wanted you to be aware of that. And then significant changes to student waitings. I've got that information for you as it stood in the House version, well, current waiting, House version, and the Senate Finance version. I'll let you look at those. The biggest changes that you should notice on there is that both versions propose to take all special education categories and move those to a 2.6 weighting. And you'll notice speech on another slide was going to have another weighting, and we'll talk about that in just a minute. But, you know, you can see traditionally where the waitings have been and what the proposal is. 2.6 across the board, you know, probably fair, that does not hurt us, obviously. The problem is, is if you have those waitings in place but do not have a traditional EFA funding formula, then these are really not that helpful. Vocational has been another item that's been, had a lot of discussion. 1.29 is the current weighting. The House proposed to put that in the K-12 core weightings, 1.0, and the Senate Finance version puts that at 1.2. So here are those add-on weightings that have a couple of things that do concern us. You'll notice that dual credit continues to be at zero under both versions. Goes from .15 to zeros. That is about $85,000 to $90,000 worth of revenue to us now, which goes to assist the district's portion of expenses to operate those valuable programs. And you'll notice the biggest change as far as number-wise is to pupils in poverty going from .2 to .5. Speech therapy, as I said, had a weighting in the House version, but that has been removed again by Senate Finance. So that, that particular category would get the 2.6 and nothing else. Okay, so wanted to give you a look, a comparison of the local supplements paid by districts as we, as they were last reported. These could be updated at any time, but this is a comparison. I have moved hours to 6% now that we have done the 1% addition, and we will maintain that going into next year. So with that, we wanted to take a couple of, a couple of lines from the salary schedules just to give you an example of what the Senate Finance version would look like in action. So we've taken a bachelor's, zero-year experience, first-year teacher, lowest degree possible. You see the 2122 line, the base. We currently have the EIA supplement, we have our local supplement, and then we have the annual salary. Now, I did put 6% in there as local supplement because that is what we are at now. Obviously, when the original schedules were built for 2122, that was at 5. So we moved to $38,000 minimum pay. Notice that the EIA supplement goes to zero because of the funding reform. We add the local supplement just to the base column to get our new starting pay, $40,000 to $8,000. This is not firm, this is not set in stone for either of these categories. This is just a what-if under the current version. And you can see the same exercise for a master's, 12-years experience teacher, which is the level that has been used by Revenue and Fiscal Affairs early on in the, the building process of the reform proposal. So you take those increases and you multiply those by the number of teachers we have and the other categories included in Proviso 1.3, it's a substantial figure, especially when you add in fringe and retirement. So got a few slides just to give you some information as to where we stand and some historical information. General fund budget, this is where we are, $63 million. I will tell you that we can expect that number to balloon to higher percentage increases from what we're used to if this funding plan moves through, because remember, more money is being shifted from the EIA side to general fund, so we have to move both revenues and expenditures. So we can expect substantial increases. Fund balance analysis based on the last completed audit took us to $10.4 million with 9.9 unassigned. And for informational purposes this evening, wanted to give you the millage cap history with the 2223 projected. And this is the disclosure based on the information that we have gotten. The CPI, the average CPI statewide growth is by far the largest, which may be surprising after what we've been through, but the CPI growth is 4.70 average statewide, very small growth within the county population for a total of 4.72%, which is roughly equivalent to eight and a half meals for about $700,000 in new recurring revenue. So a couple of considerations and questions. We would like feedback, as you are comfortable, not necessarily tonight, but as we go through the budgeting process, about a couple of things. One is this, considering the strong increase to the teacher salary schedule and the projected 3% increase for state employees, we struggle with knowing that the change in the teacher salary schedules, as I show you here, the new funding is spent by the time we add the teacher salary schedule changes, including fringe, et cetera. Yes?
So the slide you put up with the 2,000, that does not, that does not reflect the 3% increase across the board?
Correct.
That's right, okay.
That's correct. There is no, there is no percentage that we have, have discussed at this time, nor do we have in our mind for classifications outside the teacher salary schedule. It's not to say that we won't, but it's just very early in the process, which is one of the reasons this question is there. What do we do in consideration for employee classifications not covered under Proviso 1.3, knowing that the Senate Finance funding covers the $2,000 increase to the salary schedule? We feel like we will get some coverage for fringe and other things, but once that is done, there is no additional funding from the state to cover step increases or other classifications outside the Proviso. And then are there any additional local considerations that you, as the board, would like for us to consider in building the 2223 budget? Timeline at the state level, here's what's ahead. Senate Finance obviously is finished, it's printed, Senate debating this week. By the middle of May, we should have a budget. There are a couple of things that we need to keep an eye on that could delay things, but we hope not. And then this is our schedule as it is set right now. First reading on May 9th, and the second reading hoping to approve a budget on June 13th. So with that, I will wrap up. I'll allow Dr. Goodwin, if he has any comments, to make those. We're certainly available for any questions or further discussion this evening.
The Senate Finance version is without a doubt a significant step forward in a realistic budget. The House, when they passed the budget that they passed, really, the numbers just did not work and did not add up. So while this is not ideal, this certainly becomes at least somewhat attainable for us budget-wise. There are a whole lot of unknowns, though. Mr. Willard mentioned the fringe cost, and how much of that would we get? Well, that doesn't come through the education budget, that comes through the state budget. Not only that, but what happens with the retirement increase of 1%? Does, do they work that through the state side also this time? The other thing that we have not seen specifically is when we talk about the 75-25% split, we don't know where we fall in that pecking order based on our wealth. And so we will have to see, you know, typically, what, 82-83%?
State-funded, yes.
Yeah, 17-18 on local has been our split, but we don't have that number yet. This is a little bit unusual because normally at this meeting, we have the Senate Finance version of the budget in front of us. The earliest we've been told to expect that is Thursday of this week, but there is no guarantee that we'll see that on Thursday. We also don't know what will happen on the floor. I'll be honest, the, the week we were on spring break, both Mr. Willard and I worked most of that week back and forth with our associations, back and forth with folks there on the Senate Finance Committee, trying to make a case for different things. And we were somewhat successful, but, but again, you know, we're, we're better than we were with the House, but it's still a little bit complicated as to where this all ends from here. The, the last comment I would make is one that, that was actually spoken in the Senate Finance Committee. Question to Frank Ramwater specifically in that meeting, actually, it was close to what he said when Brad and I went to meet with the Senate Finance Subcommittee, K-12 Subcommittee, but he was asked specifically if district finance officials were at the table when this funding formula was devised. And Frank answered, no. So that cleared up any, there had been sort of some ambiguous leanings that, that, well, the districts were fine with this because they helped with it. We helped pre-pandemic with a different funding formula that has some things in common to this one, but overall, this one is very different than what we were involved with. And both Brad and I sat on, sat on committees that reviewed that, and, you know, when this got dropped in the House version and in the Governor's version, you know, everybody looked at each other because nobody had input. So that was actually helpful to get that on the record, though, that, you know, district finance officials had not been involved in the process. That's why when it came out of the House, it was so unrealistic, was because nobody had ever taken the formula and stuck it to a district and said, now what do you have to pay for? And so at least, especially the, the School Business Officials Association really got in and did some very detailed district-by-district snapshots so you could show how this was impacting. So hats off to all those folks who've worked on this, and we'll try to take any questions.
Any questions?
You're going to try and get us a preliminary outline before we meet on the 9th of what it's going to look like, or?
If, if we have the information soon enough, we will certainly do so. The timing is not in our favor because by the time we do a preliminary, it may have changed with actions taken this week in the, in the Full Senate. The problem is, is once, once decisions are made in the Full Senate, usually it takes a week to 10 days to turn around revenue projections from the state. So if it does not change drastically in comparison to the Senate Finance version, we may be able to do that.
Brad, just one quick question. With the Senate version that the superintendent just talked about, would that impact the district with meals?
I'm not sure I understand that question, Mr. Sweeney.
I think he's talking about a tax increase in order to pay for it.
Well, are you, are you talking about a, a millage increase at the local level?
Yes.
Okay. The, the information that is shared in this proposal is disclosing what we know from the state level as far as what the allowable cap is under Act 388, based on the CPI growth statewide and what the local growth is in Chesterfield. It, it has no bearing on, on any information or proposal made at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Any other questions? All here, none. Thank you, Mr. Willard. We appreciate your report for us tonight. Board members also want to thank you guys. It seems like we've been meeting a lot lately, and I do appreciate the extra time that you guys have put in over the last couple of months. Remind you, on May 9th, will be our regular board meeting at the PMR Learning Center, executive session at 5 o'clock, board meeting at 5:30. This time, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
To move.
Second.
Motion made by Dusa, second by Till. All in favor, we say a motion. I don't understand aye. All opposed, like sign.
Aye.
Mission unanimous. Thank you.